For the town for August the 8th, please join me in the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
We have one presentation that we're going to start with this evening, and we have Becky Sims from RCAP. Just a brief mission statement for them, RCAP Solutions is a Northeast affiliate of the Rural Community Assistance Partnership. RCAP is a national network of regional nonprofit organizations that provide comprehensive onsite technical assistance and training to help small rural communities address their drinking water, wastewater, and other community development needs. So Becky has been helping us with our wastewater and our wastewater fees. You've probably heard RCAP for those that have come to the meetings before Jane is usually plugging very well for them.
Yes, well, understand there's no charge to the town for the services that RCAP provides. I think that's very important.
Becky, I will give you the floor.
Thank you so much. So I'm gonna prepare, so try to share my screen here.
While she's doing that, Becky's been working with the Water and Sewer Committee since we've been able to get the water project underway. The wastewater facility is the next that we've been looking at for fees and what down the road it's going to need.
Thanks. So I can see lots of people out there and I can see all of you here. So that's great. My name is Becky Sims. I'm a community specialist with the RCAP Solutions. As Ben said, we're a rural development organization that provides services to help build capacity in small rural municipalities specifically as it relates to water and wastewater systems. And so tonight here, I'm going to be presenting some information about a rate study that I've been working on for the Narrowsburg Sewer District. So the reasons for conducting this study are as follows. The sewer district here serves about 800 individuals. There's 295 customers and that gives us about 424 billing units. Some commercial customers have more than one billing unit, so that's the difference there. The annual charge is $456.40 per billing unit per year, and that rate has not changed since at least 2009. And that is really what's driving us to do this study. The town is interested in having some more fairness built into that rate structure such that customers who use less water and therefore produce less wastewater would be paying less and users that produce more wastewater would be paying more. But most importantly, the goal is to stop the revenue shortfalls from happening because of course that's not sustainable for the town and it definitely doesn't put the town in a good position to be able to prepare for the capital projects that will be necessary for the sewer system. So a summary of the financial situation. So as I mentioned, the the base rate is just a single base rate per billing unit and there's no per gallon rate currently. The last three years, the sewer district has had net income losses. This is a summary of those losses. And I also want to point out that also in the last two years, there've been zero dollars put towards capital contributions even though it was in the budget. You know, because of the revenue shortfall, that was one of the things that didn't get spent for the year. So the town is not, has not been able to prepare for those needs. The good news is that there's not long-term debt currently, right? So you're not, you don't owe anybody money currently, but that's in part due to the fact that some pretty major needs exist out there. I'm gonna run through this quickly, but I, there is the full report that the board has received that has all of the details here. The point is, go to the bottom line. The bottom line is the bottom line, and that is that additional revenue in in some substantive amounts needs to be generated from sewer fees in order for the system to be able to not just cover the existing operation and maintenance costs, but to be able to prepare for the future needs of the system. So we're gonna talk about some numbers here in a moment, and right now we're we're gonna be projecting such that rates would change starting in calendar year 2024. So that's this middle column here. So just a quick summary of the customers in the sewer district. They are split between residential and commercial, then there's a few nonprofit and municipal customers. But roughly the usage is as follows. About 60% is consumed by residential customers and about 38% is consumed by commercial customers. And for the purposes of the analysis, we're just looking at those two categories. This is figure two in your report. This is what we can use to estimate how much different customers use and what, how different types of customers will be impacted under different rate options. So you may or may not be familiar with how much, you know, water you're using. It would come on your water bill and there would be a meter reading. Yes, I have one here as a as a nice example. And so right now that relates to your water bill, of course, but it could also relate to your sewer bill. So this just shows how residential customers are kind of lower on the scale. Our highest users are commercial, but but there are some higher volume customers that are residential as well. So this is the, this is the meat here. I presented five different options for consideration by the town that would cover those revenue shortfalls. Assumptions here include that the number of billing units stay the same, that nine million gallons per year is billed and that 100% of those bills are collected either through directly from customers or, you know, when by the county. To go through the the options here, option number one is truly is for demonstration purposes only. It does not meet the goal that the town has stated, which is that customer usage is involved in in the final bill. But it does go to show that that current rate of 114.10 per quarter, it's way too low and it has been for a long time. So if if nothing else was to occur, but just the system's needs were going to be financially met through a flat rate for all of the units, it would be, it would need to be at $172.63. Option number two here keeps the same cash flow that the town is used to while still allowing for customers to have some control over that final bill based on their usage. Option three is quite a different scenario. It sets that base rate. So a base rate is applied to every single customer every quarter that has an account to open, right? And then the use rate is applied based on how much is used through the meter. So by setting that low base rate, that makes the use rate much higher. That is one scenario, but I don't really recommend doing that because it doesn't leave you with a reliable revenue stream and financial sustainability is is a big priority for the town. Option number four kind of finds a middle ground here, lowering the base rate from what it currently is and then keeping the base, sorry, the use rate higher. And again, I'm I'm not really in favor of that option just because I think it leaves a little more risk out there than the town should probably be taking on at this time. Option number five takes the existing base rate and and increases it by about 10%. And that keeps the use rate at what's the lowest presented here, of course, aside from zero. And this, I think, also can can provide a good balance. And they'll see a little bit more about what I mean by that here. So this this figure here is figure three in the report. And it demonstrates how the five different rate scenarios propose each offer benefits and drawbacks when it comes to meeting the goals of financial sustainability and customer fairness. A balance has to be struck there, right? In order for the town to both be able to reliably project revenues from user fees, but also allow customers' actual usage to affect their final bills. So this is showing you the blue is would be the revenue projected from the base rate and the orange is the revenue projected from the use rate. As you can see, option number three does not provide you with hardly any reliable revenue and that could put the town in a very vulnerable situation. The same, kind of the same, I would say with option four. And number one, it's very reliable, right? But that's the situation that you're already in and it doesn't allow customer use to ultimately impact final bills. So the question really becomes how much revenue do you want to be able to rely on from that fixed rate from your base rate? And how much do you, how much, you know, risk is acceptable for that variable rate? To think about that a little bit further, this shows the difference in revenue that would be generated if there was a 20% increase in customer water usage or billed usage basically versus a 20% decrease. Again, the the rate that we're using for the analysis was nine million gallons per year. And that was based on, let's see, the last six quarters of water use, water meter reads. And so, yeah, this this just shows how much variability there could be in those in those projected revenue when customer use habits are applied. Generally speaking, right? When rates go up, people understand, woo, that's more than I was really hoping to pay for my water bill. I will use less water, right? That's a pretty typical consequence. And so that's something to keep in mind. And this presents a lot of information at once that may be too small for folks to see on the screen or or at home, but it is one of the appendices in the report. This is showing, this is appendix D showing the quarterly values. There's a second version of this showing annually if that's something you would prefer. It's in, that's appendix D. The bottom line again is that annual bills are going to increase. They, under any of these scenarios, for almost every customer, they have been way too low for too long is is just the reality. And so that is, you've got some catching up to do. What I like about this is that it can offer some comparison. So if there's folks that are like, oh, I know how much water I use because of my bill, you can kind of see whereabouts that may fall. So finally, the recommendations that I'm going to, that I'm making here for you. I I believe that option number two presents the best balance for this new rate structure, although I think depending on the desired level of risk, the option four or five could could be could meet the town's goals, more so option number five. And these are balancing, right, that desire for financial sustainability of being able to have revenue you can rely on that's going to meet the system's actual needs now and in the future and also allowing a higher degree of customer fairness in the final bill. Allowing too much of the revenue to come from user fees leaves, from use fees rather, leaves the town in a vulnerable position. So for that reason, you know, number three, I think, is totally out of the question. Option two provides about two-thirds of revenue from those base fees. We go back here and look at that. Whereas option five is about three-quarters, whereas four is about half. So those are just some things to consider as you're, you know, you're getting the budget season here, thinking about those revenue streams and and where you'd like them to be coming from. In addition to the rate change, the other recommendations that I'm making are that the number of billing units should be reviewed for accuracy and appropriateness, in particular for the commercial accounts. For residential accounts, it's somewhat easier, you know, per household. But commercial accounts, I think, may be in need of a review. There are some urgent repairs that the system has, needs for totaling, we estimated about $50,000. I would recommend that you make those repairs immediately with existing reserve funds. There's 11 customers currently who are in the sewer district but not in the water district. For those customers, the the most reasonable solution would be to add flow meters so that actual bills can be generated. If that's not possible, there are guidance values that can be used, but they are typically overestimates. And so it, I think, would be in everyone's best interest to to get meters in place. I talked a lot about upcoming needs and capital projects. Those are somewhat known, but they're not fully scoped. And that's something that I would recommend beginning to to look into so that when the time comes, you know what all needs to be done, what kind of timeframe and and some costs. Finally, a regular review of the rates and updating them. I would recommend that occurs annually or at least every two years to make sure that you can keep staying on track. You know, maybe customer use changes, maybe you know, yeah, there's, there's all sorts of things that that could affect that bottom line and you want to make sure that you're able to stay on top of it with a regular review. The last piece that I'd like to point out is the affordability ratio impact. This is a tool that's used by the US EPA to think about the financial impact of wastewater fees on, for residential users. And they evaluate this based on what percent of a household's income is being spent on sewer fees. So taking the census data from the latest five-year estimate, there was the 2021 American Community Survey estimate. If you can look at the MHI, the median household income for Narrowsburg is 48,438. So then I've gone on two sides of that, the extremely low income bracket, which is a HUD category, that 30% MHI and then above median income at 200% median MHI. What this points out is that your sewer, the sewer rates are already having a high impact on the lowest income residents. And that will continue to be the case. This is not something that is unique to your sewer district. This is something that we see all across New York State. But it is, I think, worth pointing out that there is some degree that a customer can have in terms of some degree of control a customer can have in terms of how much water they use, you know, to the extent that's practical. And there are certain residents that are not, that are going to continue to have a hard time paying for their bills. Median household income levels are currently in that low impact range just barely and and would would creep up to this higher, or I'm sorry, mid-range impact. And the highest income residents are currently experiencing a low impact and that would remain the same. So I think if for nothing else, this highlights the need to consider, as you're thinking about those bigger projects coming down the line, the need to consider supplemental funding sources for future upgrades and possibly an income survey to fully understand, you know, where folks are in your community in terms of income thresholds. And with that, I'd like to thank the members of the town that have contributed the time and effort to this study. I could not have done really any of it without your input. I appreciate the opportunity to work on this project and I'm happy to take some questions here from the board if you have any. Thank you.
This is the same income survey for water? That we had discussed, if we did an income survey?
If we did an income survey, yes, yes.
You could possibly use the same one for, well,
We didn't do one.
Yeah, it isn't real, it isn't really a survey. She's taking the data right off the census.
Okay.
The Narrowsburg.
Well, you would, you would discuss.
That's what this was.
But that's for that, but you would have had also said about doing an actual.
Yeah, when I say an income survey, that's like what's done for a funding application and that would be just for the sewer district or just for the water district.
We maybe don't need it at the moment, but we might need a data.
Yeah, you would do that in conjunction with a funding application.
Has two census reports, the town of Tustin and the hamlet of Narrowsburg. It's, and so we have the two different data points.
And the one that I used for this report was the Narrowsburg.
Right, which is the hamlet.
Yeah, because that was the closest match to the.
It is, it is.
Excuse me, could I ask Jane and the board, could you please use a microphone? I can hear her, Becky, but I can't hear you.
We have a light.
Or just speak up.
I'll speak up. Can you hear me now?
Words and then it goes back down.
Okay, I'll speak up. We were talking about the different census reporting data that is available on the US Census. And Tustin has two, a township census and a hamlet census. They call the hamlet the Narrowsburg census. And Becky used the hamlet census because that is most in line with the water and sewer district.
Dave, did you have anything you wanted to add to this at all?
I thank Becky and the board for this. I mean, this was needed a long time ago. I appreciate the board and Becky for getting it done.
I have, I I work under the assumption, and tell me if I'm wrong, that putting the sewer district's finances in order is essential to getting grants. If you get two out of whack, you may not be qualified. You may be denied grant or am I wrong?
I don't think that has anything to do with it.
I I don't know that that's a direct outcome, but certainly when you're applying for funding, I mean, first of all, you you may be doing like applying for loans and grants all at once, right? And so for loans, just like with any other loan, they want to know that you're going to pay that money back and your finances are kind of not in order, then that may make your candidacy for that funding, whether it's a grant or loan, less attractive.
Right.
I mean, then there's, I mean, there are requirements that that exist, right, to be able to close on financing. But that would be depending, that would, that's getting maybe more specific.
Okay.
But I think on one hand, you have, if there, you can clearly demonstrate financial need, that can be a good thing from a funding perspective. On the other hand, there needs to be a kind of base level of capacity to be able to handle and manage any kind of funding you receive. So if that can't be demonstrated, then it won't work in your favor.
Well, I just, something clarity for the people of the audience that I'm sure are surprised by this much information coming out, that this process started months ago and what will end up happening is this information will then be given back to the Sewer and Water Committee to make determinations on which way we financially would like to go and that there would be public hearings in order to get input from the people before any rate hikes are taking place. There would be more discussion on this. It's not something that's going to happen to that.
So I would also just like to point out, although we are not making any decisions tonight, but in the worst case, Becky made some great points that the board really feels that we want to bill people. The people that use more should pay more, bottom line. And the base rate has not increased in 14 years. And just looking at the base rate at the most, at the highest level that Becky proposes comes to 78 and a half cents a year increase from the base rate. So but and then you, the other bill will relate to your usage in all scenarios, pretty much, except for scenario, option one, which we won't do. So anyway.
Yeah, and of course, I mean, I think this goes without saying perhaps, but just for folks in the public understand, I mean, you are, of course, welcome to to choose any of these options or none of them. And I've included calculations in the report so that, you know, you can kind of play around with those numbers, moving the base rate up and the use rate down or or vice versa, you know, to consider other scenarios that may be most appropriate for you.
Has been an eye-opening experience.
No comment. I I have lots of questions for Becky and we met twice in the last day and a half. We've been wonderful partners. Just for anyone who is wondering, it is my understanding that sewer district has to operate zeroed out. Therefore, any of these rates just cover our expenses and perhaps reserves, but that were these numbers inflated or incorrect, we would see the rates continue to adjust to get to that zero. So I think sometimes when rates go up, people wonder if profit is involved or how the money is exactly being used. The water and sewer departments are both completely self, are are meant to be completely self-sustaining.
Good point, Brett.
Becky, thank you. For a 30-minute presentation that took probably 20.
There's a question in the chat.
There's, there will be a public comment. You'll be able to have some some questions for sure, and that will be tonight too. You know, your 30-minute presentation relates to, I don't know, 100 hours or more of work by the board yourself and the sewer water department.
Becky did confess it's fun for her.
There is a question in the chat that I think I could answer quickly and might be helpful.
Sure, if you want to.
It it seems someone's asking, I think, for clarification.
Yeah, clarifications are good.
The difference between the the use rate and the and the flat rate or the base rate rather. So base rate is is the amount that is paid by every billing unit every month, or I'm sorry, every quarter billing cycle. Right? The use rate then is for every thousand gallons after that. So if the base rate stays the same and you add a use rate on top, everyone that uses water, their bill is, their final bill is going to increase, right? But by how much would be controlled by how much water they use.
Yeah, so if we used option two or option five, their base rate at option two is 114.10. They use nothing. At that point, it would stay the same, but if they use a thousand, for every thousand gallons, it would go up 11.03. And unlike the water where there's a 9,000 gallon start off, this is billed for every thousand gallons from the beginning. If nothing else, I will thank Becky for her time and we will move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you so much.
I don't know, you want to wait for the first over comment period, just in case there's a question we can't answer, but.
Sure, thanks.
1.4, our payment of bills.
Oh, looks good.
General expended $43,839.15. Highway $47,379.66. Water $16,220.31. Sewer $16,484.55. Our capital highway project was $249,188.30. And our capital water was $30,897.50 for a total of $404,009.47. I think Greg and Jane did bills.
Yeah, and I move that we pay the bills as presented.
I have a motion, a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will go through some of the division reports. The ones that we do not go through are online and it is recommended that you take a look at them. There's quite a bit of stuff going on. I am going to jump into the Upper Delaware Council. This was submitted by Evan Padua. A couple of things on there. One of the first ones was over the past six weeks, there have been five confirmed, a northern state that fish caught in the upper Delaware north of Narrowsburg. If an angler is to catch one, they're asked to kill it and report it to the National Park Service, the New York DEC, or the PFBC in Pennsylvania. The UDC is also seeking nominations for the 35th Annual River Valley Awards Banquet, which include the Distinguished Service Award, the Robin M. Daniels Memorial Lifesaving Award, Community Service Award, the Cultural Achievement Award, the Outstanding Community Achievement, the Partnership Award, the Volunteer Award, and Awards of Recognition. Any questions from the board on that? Any questions from the board on that? Okay. Uh, the Energy Committee. Uh, NIPA is troubleshooting the gateway for communicating with the lights on Main Street. Uh, this is the reason they are not functioning properly. Once resolved, they can complete the commissioning of the decorative lights. Uh, today I did meet with one of the subcontractors who are on Main Street to replace two inoperable of the decorative lights. Uh, with the installation of the parking lot lights on Main Street, NIPA has achieved substantial completion of this project. A punch list and substantial completion list was forwarded to the town for a sign-off. Uh, at this time, two old-style lights were found have been, uh, missed for the LED installation, uh, as a result of checking the, uh, completion list. NIPA has been advised of those and they will rectify that. Uh, Jen Porter continues to work with the solving Catskill Zero Waste Food Securities Expansion Project, which includes the relocation of the horse. Jen has prepared the third quarter, the April through June, materials for the town to complete and then she will submit to the DEC for repayment. Uh, the first and second quarter payments were issued back to the town on the twenty-sixth of May and the twentieth of June. Right now, the move date for the horse is set for the twenty-fourth of this month. And that's up from October. Um, in order to bring back the abandoned plastic collection program, Tustin Social is partnering with Jessica Weiss of Growing Soul and redistributing boxes in Tustin. They will be at Pete's Market, Tustin, the Chatham Library and the post office. Tustin Social will integrate this program with the kids programming, uh, that they currently do in town and to include the recycling.
That's wonderful.
That's all there is on that. Any questions on that? If not, I will go to the zoning revision committee.
Nothing to report.
Conservation Advisory Committee.
Yeah, this committee hasn't met recently. We're still waiting for information regarding our grant application for an open space and recreation plan from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. Uh, the awards are due to be announced either this month or next month. But I will say that I am optimistically hopeful because I received an email from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation inquiring as to our status in the system awards management system, which is a system that if you have a government grant, um, you have to be registered and we are up to date. So the mere fact that they're asking that question means that we're not in the don't be bothered pile. We're in a pile that has questions. So I'm happy about that.
That's for Lee.
Thank you. Uh, Water Insurer Committee.
Yeah, we met yesterday and we, the committee reviewed the sewer rate study presented by Becky of RCAP Solutions. Um, you've heard that presentation. And then the committee also reviewed the, uh, lead pipe inventory grant proposal that's been written by Delaware Engineering. Uh, it seems that the state will be, um, requiring that every, uh, public water system, uh, check their pipes for lead, uh, lead involvement or lead, whatever, lead pipes. And, um, that, that isn't a simple job. It requires four holes dug at every, uh, hookup. So it's quite a thing. But, um, we do qualify for a lead service line inventory grant from the, I think it's the federal government, it might be, yes, it is. Um, and our income level for the hamlet enabled us to, um, be qualified for this inventory. And if we get it, it would be paid for a hundred percent, which is really quite, it's quite remarkable. So that was, and that has to be turned in this month and Delaware Engineering will do that on our behalf. Well, maybe go on?
May I add one thing to the Water Insurer? Um, when that survey is done for lead pipes, if people's yards are going to be affected by that work or the days that it is scheduled to be in people's, uh, neighborhood, on their streets, that type of thing, they will be notified in advance.
That's way down the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Grants is next. So how many people have been down to the main street today and seen the activity? The, uh, Little Lake Erie Culver Project is ahead of schedule sort of because originally they told us on April tenth that the, um, the preformed, uh, construction piece would be delivered, but it was actually delivered today. So we're, um, pleased that we're going forward with that. The water infrastructure project continues to be coordinated by Delaware Engineering. And I just talked to you about the lead pipes. The pavilion project is ongoing and I think we'll hear an update about that. I know we will later on in this meeting. We're, uh, as I said, waiting for word on the Delaware River Basin Restoration Grant for the purpose of an open space, um, and recreation plan. The final report for the UDC grant for the zoning updates will be submitted this week. It's to the eighteenth, but it will be submitted this week. And then there's a new, uh, UDC grant application that will be submitted for the purpose of partial funding for an open space and recreation brand, I did, um, plan. Did we, we approved that in the past?
I believe we did, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's grants.
Uh, Tustin Youth Commission, the weekly after-school program, three to six, will end next week, but a weekly program is underway for the summer. Preparations for Halloween are underway. In the Kalahari Indoor Water Park, November tenth and eleventh, they still have about ten rooms available.
And the Wade County Fair, the Tustin Youth Commission did go to, and they had about forty-seven, forty-seven?
Forty-seven, forty-eight, something like that. Yeah, we just looked at it.
In the high forties anyway, uh, Tustin Youth members attend. So that's nice. And remember, any Tustin Youth program that a Tustin Youth member attends, there's no charge to the Tustin Youth or the Tustin Youth.
Any comments from the board on any of that?
For those of you who didn't see, um, some of the kids at River Fest, uh, that were involved with Tustin Youth did. They put together a show based on the DVAA posters, two of them they chose, the fanciest dog in town and the river monster, and they were both really charming. I think the kids had a really good experience.
Thank you. Before we work into all business, I will open the floor up for public comment. We will start with here first and then we will move into Zoom. And I have a young lady in the back that is just dying to come forward.
Well, I hope things will be on the agenda, um, we have emails. So, hi, I'm Mari Vodz, I'm the chair of the Narrowsburg Beautification Group. And we have a bi-annual fundraiser, a plant swap. Um, and we usually use a portion, um, thanks to the town, a portion of the public parking lot in front of the library. So we're hoping to have our event on October seventh and are seeking permission to use the parking lot.
We will put that under new business to make sure that you have permission to use the parking lot. Do you have anything else other than a parking lot?
Um, we're good with the parking lot and then we were also, um, we have some questions about reimbursement for our members who, um, have been purchasing plants and other supplies, um, to plant in the garden beds around town. So we had submitted requests to the town.
We had, we made a check out, we approved a check today.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Seven hundred and something, I think it was.
Fabiana, our treasurer.
You would in there, but.
Yeah, that was approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. The beds are looking impressive, just really very.
If you see somebody who looks good, take a picture and file it to us. It only helps them get grants in the future.
Other comment? Yes, start.
Yeah, um, first of all, I, I'd like to thank whoever was responsible for the greatly expanded agenda with much more detail of what was being discussed. That was very helpful to me and I assure other people, and I do thank whoever it was who put that together because it was obviously quite an extensive work. I'd also like to thank whoever in the town was responsible for removing the fallen tree that had landed in the library parking lot and over the Pick Memorial Gardens. That was also taken out very carefully. They didn't do anything to disturb the gardens and they put the benches back in where they were supposed to go. So that was much appreciated.
I think that was your highway department.
The highway department, though, then I have to say kudos to them. Um, I have come to the realization that even if the wifi doesn't go down and we don't have the comments, uh, recorded there to be able to see what people said, um, you really have to have something in writing in order to have what the comment was that you made included as part of the record that people can reference at some point. So on that note, I would like to say, you already addressed, um, some of my questions about the, uh, LED status of the, um, lights on Main Street. I understand there were two more decorative lights that were found that are going to be put up.
Two of the old style, not the decorative on Main Street, the old style.
And where did, where were those going to go?
Uh, there's one that was missing on Route ninety-seven, uh, across, almost directly across from Feagle's House.
Okay.
And then there's another one that's down, uh, on the pole at the construction zone.
Okay, all right. What happened with the, um, wifi installation on those lights? You said that?
It's still in process.
And do you have any idea of when that might come to fruition? Is this complicated by, uh, the input, uh, problem for keeping the lights on and off? Is that NIPA looking into that as well?
No, right now, we're just waiting for the hookup here at the town so they can do it. We, we've had a, uh, disconnect with Frontier and them putting things in. So I, I would say that probably within the next thirty to sixty days, you're going to see the, we're going to go with Spectrum on it. We have too many issues with Frontier, so. Um, and that was also part of my discussions with NIPA. They were asking the same questions that you're asking, so they're waiting to get it. They get it done also.
Okay, so the wifi situation is strictly, um, a problem with the provider and doesn't have anything to do with the input to the different lights?
Correct.
Do you know where you're going to put the wifi tower or?
It's probably going to be up on the, uh, the roof of this building.
And what areas will then be served by the wifi?
It will go down, uh, Bridge Street and then down Main Street. And then if we do any down Demora Lane, it's all going to depend. We originally had s- set it up for a tower here off of the building and a tower on the bank building, which would have served a little bit farther, so. We'll, we'll find out for sure, but they feel it'll go all the way to Fifth.
And do you have any reach down to the Peace Plaza?
No, I don't think it'll reach that far.
Not that far, okay. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to ask and bring up again is what is the status of the request for the town to provide an ADA compliant public toilet on Main Street or toilets on Main Street?
I think that's to say it was last week or last month.
Last month and the month before that and the month.
We're not, we're not, the town is not providing that. I think that's as succinct as I can get.
Okay, so your, your position then remains that this is on the backs of the merchants to have to service people that come into town?
I think part of that comes from a real casual survey of other towns within our, our county and what they provided.
And towns, those towns have large festivals and people coming in to shop and do all kinds of touristy things. Because I think, again, I was down at the library or the post office and I had a group of about five people walking down the street saying, you know, is there a bathroom? And the answer is embarrassingly enough, no. I, it, I just, it, it boggles the mind that this can continue to be just ignored. And the town is responsible, as far as I'm concerned. You're asking people to come in here and to visit our places and bring their children and go around and eat in the restaurants. In the restaurants, if they eat, they can use the restaurant bathrooms. But otherwise, forget it. Just forget it. And I think that's not correct. And I'd like to just state that position clearly here. The town should look into this and provide public restroom facilities, at least on Main Street. And they have to be ADA compliant. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else on the floor? Yes.
Yeah, good evening. Eugene Wolf, five-one-two Delaware Drive. Uh, questions on the RCAP? Lady still here?
Yep.
So, uh, you said the last three years operated at a loss. Uh, why, why is the loss? What's?
Actually, it's, it's more than the last three, but the last three years are what we actually used.
Okay. And, uh, previous, uh, cap contributions, when did they stop? And what was the source of them originally?
Capital improvement?
Yeah.
They had been putting money in. Uh, back in twenty thirteen, there was actually the end of a bond, a capital improvement. And instead of maintaining that money and putting that into capital accounts because the, the, uh, people were used to it, they were part of the service area, uh, that was discontinued and the rates were lowered.
Okay.
I, you know, I, I, I'm not, I'm not going to.
Sure.
This is why we did the last three years. I, I've been here for three years, so that's why we use the last three years.
So I'm a little bit confused about the measurement, you know, just as a novice, not understanding. I thought that the water coming into my home was measured, metered. And that's the water that the new water rate that went in effect is being, uh, was raised.
Correct.
I always felt that the sewage must be the solid waste handling of the solid waste leaving my home. So are you saying that the water that's leaving my home going into the sewage is also metered?
No, not at this point.
So then how can you raise the water coming into my home and then say, oh, we've got to raise the water coming to your home again? I don't understand.
Because one, one is water.
Yes.
That is what you're ingesting.
Right.
One is effluent, that is what is leaving. So the water that goes down your drain, it came through the water mains to your house, but now it's going down the sewer drains, two separate districts, the water district, the sewer district. It's going down the drain and heading to our sewer plant where it is untreated. So your, your water is treated to come to your house and then it's treated after it leaves your house in order to go back to the environment.
But you raised the rate, you, you raised the rate, let's just say, what was it, six months ago?
Sure.
Six months ago, the water coming in, that rate was raised.
Yes.
Now, this proposal is to raise the rate of what? The water coming in?
No, 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 the water coming out. You've got.
Coming out?
Yes. You've got two districts. That's what, that's what we need to understand is you have two districts. One is a water district and one is a sewer. Much like Greg said, each of those districts are special districts. So in the state of New York, special districts cannot operate at a profit. They can only break even. So if, if it costs us ten dollars, you know, so that's what this is. Now we're looking at the wastewater end of the system. We did the water end of the system.
Gotcha.
Now we're doing the wastewater.
So RCAP said, if you use less water, then in one of the proposals, you would pay less.
Correct. Because you're less, you're metering less into your, you're metering less from the water. So that means less is going out into the.
So is that, is, it, does that mean that? I mean, if, if, if I'm paying for the water rate, it's coming into my home, you've raised that rate. Now, RCAP says, well, if you use less water, then you'll pay less on the sewage rate.
Well, that's because it's being metered. You're being metered. I, I think somewhere we've got a disconnect that we've got two separate entities here.
Right.
You, you've got a water district or drinking water.
Gotcha.
You've got a wastewater facility or waste.
Right.
So yes, we're charging you for the water that comes into your house, much like my water comes from a well.
Right.
I pay the well to come in and drill it, put a pump in it, put the expansion tank in the house, that, that's my drinking water.
Right.
Then I pay the septic people to come to pump my tanks.
I get that. That's, that I can understand.
That's exactly what you've got. The only difference is it's the water district that's giving you your water and this, uh, sewer district is basically pumping your tanks and doing your.
But you're not metering what's leaving, so.
No, we're using the water that's coming in.
Yes, but you've already charged us now for that water.
That is, what we're using that, that meter rate for is because if it's coming through your water, it's more than likely the majority of that is going out your septic. Now, the, the alternative to that, and I can check with RCAP or with our superintendent, is that we could put meters on all of the discharge pipes and do it that way. That would get a little expensive.
Sure. And then one last thing on that subject.
I, I can speak to that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I mean, for one, I mean, that, that is a possibility, right? And that would of course add expense because it would mean. And that would of course add expense because it would mean a second set of meters. Um, additionally, I think for reasons we probably can all conjure, uh effluent meters, they need to be sturdier than drinking water meters, um in terms of the, you know, the environment that they can operate in. So generally speaking, I would not think that that's going to be helpful here across the district. If you had a customer who, let's say, was doing a lot of irrigation, right? Where you, that water that's come, the, the drinking water, right, that we pay to be potable to meet drinking water standards, um i- if for some reason a lot of that volume was not going to end up in the sewer, then sure, maybe an effluent meter makes sense for that customer. But for basically everybody else, like the proportion that you like drink or irrigate with, it's going to be a very small portion of the overall water. And so you use the meter coming in as this, as the assumption of what's going out. Um, I can, can I, can I also clarify one other thing then? That I think relates to what you're saying um about paying less, right? It's important when we use that phrase, uh paying less, it's less than what, right? And so when, when I'm talking about the lowest volume users paying, the least paying less, that may not mean less than their current bill now. I think that, that's an important distinction I want to make. They would be paying the lowest of the customers that are using water, right? But in almost every scenario, I think every customer is very, very, very likely going to be looking at a higher bill than what you are currently paying now. But by how much can be controlled by one's usage?
And, and one last thing, uh you mentioned the lead pipes. Is, you test the water, is there lead in, is there a trace amount of lead in the water curve?
I, well, there is not. But the state and federal government actually has required the state that we have to do an inspection of all our pipes feeding into a home. So you're looking at at the main line for every house, every connection we have in the town. You have to dig a hole eighteen inches from the main, see what the pipe is. Then you gotta go to where the curb stop is, eighteen inches on either side of it, dig another hole, what the pipe is. Then eighteen inches outside the house and dig another hole to see what it is. And then go inside the home and see what's coming through the wall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, last question then. Uh, so on old business, there's no public input. So if one wants to talk about some, the uh item of the pavilion that is now, or is that?
Uh, that's gonna be an old business and we will probably take some public comment on that.
Thank you, Jenny.
Fabian, I just wanted to follow up on the um analysis you did, which was terrific. So there was a lot of analysis on the revenue uh base versus variable. I'm wondering, is there an analysis on the cost to the town, base fixed versus variable? That would help to really do an analysis on which one of those options to choose.
I can't answer that. Um, yes, and I love that you asked that question because that is often um one of the basis a basis that can be used for presenting one of those three options. Um, and I actually had that in, in my analysis initially and and I didn't include it in the whole set, uh and here's why. Um, so the type of sewer system that you have here, which is one where you have septic tanks that get pumped and then affluent that gets collected and treated at the plant, um there's just really not a lot of variable cost involved in that. And so whether the plant is operating at, let's say, thirty thousand gallons a day or eighty thousand gallons a day.
It's quite the same.
The cost is basically the same. And so what you ended up there, I forget what the final numbers were. I think it was somewhere around a hundred and fifty dollars for the base rate and then the, the use rate was only like eighty two and change for the, for the uh per thousand gallons, which is lower than would really make an impact. So for that reason, I, I didn't offer that as part of this presentation.
But it's good to know.
Yeah, it is.
It makes that variable rate the really good here.
Yes.
A point of clarification. If you have a well dug and you pay for the cost of the well and you have something that receives wastewater, how does that compare to what is, what we're talking about now with town, water and sewer?
Do we talk about that a lot?
Yeah, if I was, if I could have town water and sewer um where I live and pay the rates that were suggesting they may go to and plus what your last rate raise was, I would take that in a heartbeat.
Go ahead.
Because I don't get, I don't get uh water and sewer during a power outage. I have to have a generator in order to do that. When my well pump goes, I pay the five to seven thousand dollars to put it in. To dig the well today, you're gonna spend anywhere from seven to twenty thousand dollars to put a well in.
And the leach field.
And if your leach field goes, you're gonna spend another ten thousand dollars.
I live in a house that was built in eighteen forty-six and my septic system was probably from the late or early nineteen fifties. I recently had to replace my septic system at a cost of about nineteen thousand dollars, which is on me. So you're taking into consideration what you're paying, as for what you might be paying, it's still a much better value. Like Ben has said, I have an artesian well, it's about four hundred and fifty feet, but my well pump goes, it's an expensive proposition to replace that well pump. Which again, I saddle the entire cost of that. So that's just to put things into perspective, you know, yeah, there's some, sort of some charm to living out in the woods, but there are expenses to it as well.
Thanks.
And plus, if we want our water treated, that would also be honest. Like, my water at home is not treated. It's not coordinated, it's not delivered. So, so I mean, there's just pros and cons.
And I request when you ask that question, it's my understanding that homes in the water district cannot have wells.
She was just asking.
No, just, uh, just as a point of education, not, I'm not accusing Iris of going out in her backyard. But I just wanted that to be clear.
Yeah, I got a text that Mary's out there with a shovel.
That might be a different issue.
Yes.
Could I just ask one more question?
Sure.
Becky, um, you mentioned something about uh fifty thousand dollars worth of immediate repairs that had to be acted on. What are those repairs and where does fifty thousand dollars come from?
Sure, um, I'm gonna kick this to Dave for any detail, but um my understanding is that there's uh one of the pump stations, the control panel is uh in urgent need of replacement, um as well as, is it parts of a generator or a generator itself? Um, and when you had looked into those most recently, I believe it was, it said forty-eight thousand dollars. And that's probably over fifty now, because that was a couple of months.
Yeah. And Star, those, those repairs are only within the district. So only the people within that district pay for those repairs. That's not a town.
Oh, I'm, I'm still wondering.
Yeah, no, I just, in case, sometimes people think that the town actually pays for it and that this is why there's a hardship on the water district and the sewer district, because they're so small.
And, and because it's literally, I don't know, it's just that you can't take from the whole town budget to pay for anything that is just in the water district. The water, just as Greg has been saying, the water district can't run at a profit, the, the water district can't be subsidized by the rest of the town because it's just not fair. I mean, they're not getting the benefit.
So I'm asking again then, where is the fifty thousand dollars for the needed repairs coming from?
There is money in the reserve, uh on one of the charts, you'll see that we've been utilizing reserve monies unallocated reserve monies to keep the district going. So there are monies there, but it's going to deplete that district by that much money.
And how do you compensate and get that money back?
We raised the rate. Are there any other questions from the floor before I go to Zoom? Yes, Purdy?
I've got a question for Dick. In your analysis, the sewer district is actually an agent. Uh, it's a very different district, it's the only one around now. The other one that was like, it had to be rebuilt. There's no money for creating a sewer line. Sooner or later, the basic commission's gonna come along and say, you can't discharge that. But you have to have, start building the base.
Yes, and, and that's, um, I mean, that's exactly what I'm recommending that the town does, um, like, starting immediately. Um, I mean, as Ben mentioned, there, there is, I mean, I would say a decent amount of funds in the unallocated reserve, um, in terms of like being able to do things like go and spend fifty thousand dollars on necessary equipment. Um, and at the rate that you're going, that those funds will be gone by the end of twenty twenty-five. So that's urgent, right? That, that not, that you don't continue to draw that down and that you begin, I would say, also very soon to scope out what those capital project needs are going to be before you are required to do that by someone like, um, you know, the regulators.
And the price of the sewer plant went from four million dollars to replace it up to, I heard it was almost three million.
Because they had to do different treatment processes? Okay.
But just clarification, they didn't do that. Calicoon didn't have the, a new operator came in.
Yeah.
But not as bad as they thought.
No.
So there's twenty million dollars down, I think it was a two, the two million dollar project.
But it's still, we talked about millions, there you go.
Do we have anybody on Zoom that can reach out for comment before I move into this whole business?
Would your percentages?
No.
For savings account? And there's nothing that is.
Anybody for Zoom? No? We're gonna move into old business at this point. We're gonna move into old business. Um, four point one is a park pavilion. We have set on here um for bid documents that we do have here um for the board to look over and approve for submission. Before we do that, I'm going to reopen the floor for public comment strictly for questions about the park, because I know I've got a lot of people here for it. So you're first.
Yeah, Eugene Wolf, five one two Delaware Drive. I understand the need for shade in the park because the town, in its infinite wisdom, removed what little shade was there by cutting down the trees. But I'll talk a little bit louder for you. I'll say, okay. Anyway, the, the size of the pavilion, the fifteen by thirty.
Fifty.
Excuse me, fifty by thirty, fifty by thirty. You know, so I have some questions. So one of the questions is how was the size determined? Because I believe fifteen hundred square feet is incongruous with the surrounding properties. In other words, it's not in harmony with the surrounding properties. It's bigger than most, except one or two exclusions. It's bigger than most of the houses that surround the park. So I, I just, it, it's, it's a bit difficult to understand how that size came to be. Um, the other thing is that I feel that any pavilion that's built must be one hundred percent ADA compliant. Because I would hate to see something built and then we get litigation because there are serial sewers, people who sue for ADA compliance and that would be a ripe target. So that would include the walkways, the entrance to the pavilion. Everything has to be ADA if the public tax money's being spent. I saw an email that said Carl will draw the plans for the pavilion. I'm assuming that's Carl, the architect, you know, with the thirty-year-old stationery that we heard from at the last meeting.
He's not really an architect.
Well, what I want to know is, is Carl uh doing that pro bono? Or is he on retainer from the town? Or is that part of, of an RFP process? How does Carl get?
I believe it came out to a percentage. I would have to check, I think it comes out to five or six thousand dollars.
So, and his selection, is that through an RFP uh process?
No, we don't have to RFP everything, especially when we're talking a five thousand dollar, six thousand dollar. It's a.
So you have a group of like, you know, some towns will have like four or five that you choose from and you rotate.
Walk Morehead is chosen to do the open space that Jane was talking about earlier.
Got it.
No RFP went out for that.
Okay, so, so you have a rotating.
We have people that we choose for what we feel fits best.
Thank you. For the record, I mean personally, I'm against any, any commercial organization or business being able to rent or lease uh the structure in order to make their living off of other people's taxes. So in other words, uh, what I'm saying is, you know, I don't believe that, that it should be allowed to have private parties there and being leased and being rented, especially if that business is now turning a profit on the backs of our taxes.
I, I think an answer to that question would be um a different fee structure if the town decided to do that. So I'm a resident of the town, I want to have a, a fiftieth birthday party for somebody. It's gonna cost me two hundred dollars a day to do it. Uh, maybe I have somebody that's into health and wellness, such as a Chi-Hive, and they wanna do something down there for the day. And they're gonna pay three or four hundred dollars for the day to do it if they're, you know, so inclined to do something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I think that that is equitable. That type of thinking is equitable, is what I'm getting at.
And I mean, I'm, I'm looking at that from a structure that Lacko Action has. They have a similar sized building and they do the, the same thing.
And just to piggyback on that, I've, I've been doing some research on how the fees are done in other communities. There would be a resident and a non-resident uh pricing structure.
And a profit and not for profit structure.
Yes, fine. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you know, government's really good at spending and losing money, not so good at making money, so anything you can do to help, that would be good. I also saw in the emails mentioning that Floyd Campfield completing the Blue Stone sidewalk. That project was abandoned maybe three or four years ago. Um, again, uh was that pro bono? Is that RFP? I mean, how does that come about? That someone who, that project ends three years or four years ago and now it, it begins again?
I don't have an answer for that other than that was before I came in. You know, so I, I know, no, no, I know you don't. I don't take it personally. I, I'm just kinda.
The problem there was he ran out of. What? Oh, uh, I understand that he had difficulty with this um stone um source. And that's why that was abandoned, but supposedly he's uh got a new source.
Yes.
I'll, I'll continue. Uh, the kitchen, there's a plan for a kitchen. And uh one of the justifications was uh to educate the youth on healthy eating.
I, yeah, the kitchen. The name, the word kitchen, congr- you know, all of a sudden people are thinking of uh the stove, the commercial stove. We're talking a sink with running water to clean things and possibly a hot plate to keep things warm.
I see.
Not a stove, not gas, electric, not an oven that mice get into and we have to worry about keeping clean.
So when I saw the education process, I was like, well, look, you know, like many people in the room here, I'm paying a couple of grand a year for school tax, so if someone has a uh problem with the curriculum at the schools and teaching, uh solve it at the school board level, don't build a kitchen, you know, to, 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 to on our taxes, because that's double dip.
Yeah.
So you're talking about a kitchen again, whatever would go in, again, that sink, that hot stove or whatever it is, hot plate, has to be ADA compliant because, again, town can't be sued for these things. Uh, toilets. Well, you may tell me something different, but toilets, I was thinking that these would be properly engineered ADA toilets. And uh I'm saying, oh, if Bethel Woods, you know, they've got customers buying, paying thirty to a thousand dollars a ticket. If portable toilets are good enough for Bethel Woods, kind of explain to me like I'm a five-year-old why a small community park like that, a portable toilet wouldn't be, you know, sufficient.
It might be. Um, this was one of the things that, where it could be met. It's like, is it going to get hooked up right away? Do we have the money to do that? We might. We might not. It might end up being.
And and then there was mention, you know, of a uh paid position to uh to maintain the toilets in the kitchen and clean up, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, that that's just unaffordable, unsustainable. Any cities that have these facilities already have gone out now and contracted for those services because they found it's easier for budgeting purposes with the shortage of labor, et cetera, et cetera. So to think that one would create a paid position for that, I think is uh.
It might be a paid position. It might be an hourly position in order to say, we're gonna need you two hours this week because we have two different functions going on. And we're gonna have to make sure that that's done, much like we do with uh putting out the bid for the lawn mowing services. We we can't continue to provide things for people that they want and not be able to maintain those things as we get them. It's one thing to be able to do uh.
No, no, please let Mr. Johnson finish, please.
Yeah, that's a whole nother, actually, that's a whole nother answer. Um who wants it? In twenty sixteen, there was a study done, again, before I came in about who wanted it in a multi-generational park. Um, you know, there were things that were in that. The park addressed a community-wide need for passive and active recreational opportunities. The proposed plan involved the modification and improvement of the existing flats recreation area through multiple interventions phased over time. It is posed that the public space, which presently includes a ball field and playground area, be enhanced for people of all ages to enjoy and engage with the community. That was the objective of that Tustin multi-generational park, which grew out of the Narasburg Master Plan. Again, before I was here in twenty thirteen for the plan, I was here the years before that for the first comprehensive plan and then the second comprehensive plan. So obviously, between those two plans and the committees, a need was developed. A need was shown. The the park can stay in in disarray and not be used. That'll be for people to determine. But I mean, I know a lot of people here that know what that place used to be like. Is a pavilion too big? Maybe it is. That's something they can discuss tonight. But I I, you know, a year and a half ago, they did a uh an event with the River Reporter. Um and I believe Tustin Social might have been part of that. Uh and the first thing that they said was what you said, there's no place for shade. I spoke to a gentleman today, bro, his grandkids down last week, said I didn't stay. So yeah, maybe the maybe the pavilion is too big. Maybe it doesn't need a bathroom in it. But I think we could, as a community, agree that there should be something down there to allow families to utilize.
I agree with you. Uh I I saw that there was also an overflow parking uh agreement with the lumber company. And I was just a little bit concerned that that might set a precedence or where a structure is being built and then parking requirements can be met by an agreement with a private landowner, which may change in the future. I mean, that lumber company may become houses in the future. And uh I would be, I would be concerned that uh that precedent isn't established, particularly with all the parking problems we have in our town. When the next person who comes up and says, hey, I want to wreck this structure and I don't have the parking, but I've got an agreement with so and so down the road. And then the board, you know, the planning board, whoever board says, no, that that doesn't, that's not in compliance. And say, well, you did it with the fifteen hundred square feet down on the flats. So I think that that is also a consideration before you sign an agreement or get a certificate of insurance or such, uh based on such an agreement, that is that setting the precedents.
Well, that, and and to answer that is we go to each one, so we don't have to go back to it. Um that was identified by the public that, wow, you're gonna do all this work. Where are the people gonna park? They didn't like the uh the answer that, well, they've always parked down there. They they, you know, they they always parked down there. They always did it around. So you say, well, let's look again at the master plan and the multi-generational park plan. What was identified in there? As with most of Tustin, it was identified that there's a parking issue. So the people don't want to see cars parked on the side of the road. Okay, but we've got a park, how are we gonna use it? Let's talk to the lumber company and see what Roger Durham says, because Roger Durham owns a piece of property that you'll probably never be able to build a house on it because it's directly in the floodplain. And that's exactly where the water cut through. That's the nice thing about the playground. It's at a floodplain. So the loss to permanent structures is a lot less. So let's go to Roger and talk to him. Sure enough, yes, you know what? You can use this. But now we address the issue of where do people park? And the complaint became, well, we don't want to park the area. What what do we want? You know, how how do we, how do we come to a conclusion that's gonna make everybody happy? I don't know that we are going to come to a conclusion that's gonna make everybody happy, but at least those concerns were addressed. We got a parking issue. Okay, how can we solve it?
Uh it shows initiative. I mean, I I can't, I can't take away from it. It's just was the concern that it's a precedent for future building that that may fall back. And then last but not least, you know, again, getting back to the size of the pavilion, the proposed kitchen, the toilets, the whole package, which, you know, at this point was presented. So we had limited information. You had shone the light on on some of these things. You know, the concern then comes, how are we gonna pay for it? You know, myself and three hundred and forty nine other people are in this sewer district. We've already had the water increase. We're about to have the sewer increase. Uh, you know, we we just want to make sure that, uh, you know, it's not that the plans to put ten pounds of potatoes in a five pound sack doesn't start coming out of our back pot.
The funding right now, in order to build this, is coming from the grant that came from Sullivan one eighty in the federal ARPA money. So there will be no budget money that has been put for it. That being said, you're gonna have maintenance and upkeep for the for the duration of this building. That's a fact. You know, they wanted us to stay here. They didn't want a new town hall. They didn't want us on Main Street. We listen to the people. Okay, I got one office closed due to renovation work that was not expected. It's gonna cost us more money. Sometimes we get involved in those things that it's what the people want. Sometimes it's expensive. We're hoping that this will be something that the people will want and actually use. There won't be a burden. We're not, we're not. Sullivan one eighty is money from Sullivan one eighty. ARPA money is our federal tax money. Well, you know, let's be honest with that. It's, we pay for it one way or another, but it's not coming out of the town, the Tustin budget.
Thank you.
I'll start in the front and move to the back, Iris.
I'm a resident of the flats. I think that we are overlooking something, and I think what we are overlooking is that flats are residential. What I am hearing and what I have gleaned from some of this is that this is going to become a commercialized project in a residential area. People in the flats are in the flats because they want a residential area. You had mentioned if somebody wanted to have some kind of party or something, you need a place for it to have. There have been parties down here. They have rented the space here. The Chi-Hive has rented space here. People have had weddings here. There are a number of things that have happened here and space is available here. If one wants to create an open pavilion with perhaps some picnic tables underneath it for shelter and for people to sit, that's one thing. As far as flush toilets or anything else, I am in firm agreement with Eugene as far as and many others that portasans are something that are very usable, workable, and whatever company would put the portasans in, they're responsible for cleaning it. The park is for children and adults to enjoy in a residential community without commercializing it and changing the entire environment because of that. If Durham is willing to give some parking, he could be willing to give some parking for cars who want to use the park, adults who want to play. You want to create something, a pickleball court, a tennis court. Finish the pathway around because we would like to have a pathway that completely goes around. It's a walkway. That is for residents of Tustin coming into a residential area. It's not going to be for cooking. It's not going to be for creating commercialized stuff. We had a whole situation where there was an application for a mixed-use project over at Art Pex Barn. People did not want that. So as a person who lives here, who loves living here, I love the fact that it is residential. I want to see that it's residential, and I don't think I'm the only one who feels that way.
Thank you, Iris.
Hi, I'm I'm Anthony LaVado. I live down on Delaware Drive in the flats. Uh I couldn't agree more. There's no way I could agree more with with Iris than I than I do right now. It is a residential area. And uh the reason that I came here twelve years ago was because of that. And I have seen um a little bit of changes over the the last couple of years. We had an, we had a problem with crime down there in terms of uh drug use, drug selling, et cetera, et cetera. So now, when this pops up and the limited information that I was able to digest from the internet about uh we want a kitchen, we want a a flush toilet, as you use the term, that's a perfect term, flush toilet. We wanted to install a bathroom like that. It reminds me of being in the city as a kid. I grew up in the city. Public toilet, unattended, in a very quiet rural area, is a magnet for crime. It's a magnet for drug use, the drug selling. It's a magnet for uh for homelessness. It's a magnet for for a lot of things that we don't need down in this quiet residential area. Uh in terms of that parking, that's great. If the uh the fellow from Durham Lumber wants to uh, you know, provide some parking, green. But what about the traffic plan? Is there a traffic plan for this? Those roads are not set up for three cars a cross. You can pass each other on that street. Somebody's parking in the street, it's a problem there. So for the, for those of us who live down in the flats, what you're gonna wind up having is you're gonna have clogged roads. You already see it. There's one way in, one one way out. When the launderet is is uh is uh really doing well, there's one way in and one way out, and it's a mess. So now that's gonna move down into the flats area? That's a, that's a problem. There's gonna be more garbage down there if we decide that this is is uh goes off as planned, where we have uh the parties, you know, pay-per-party, those kind of things, more garbage. You're gonna have definitely more noise than you really need in a in a residential area. You're gonna have people floating around down there that, uh, you know, if you build it, they will come, that kind of thing, but not for the right reasons. Okay? I know this, this is what's gonna wind up happening. We got rid of the crime, we got rid of the drugs, for the most part. And this thing is gonna be a magnet for it again, if if it's not uh if it's not looked at correctly. Uh state police, they're not coming to babysit our park. It's not gonna happen. You know that, right? They're not coming, they're not coming to babysit our park. So that.
They come down, fifteen minutes. The the comment, comments here.
Yeah, let me, let me, yeah, I'm sorry. Totally, yeah, I'll I'll continue going that way. So with without that, with without somebody, without a a local law enforcement in the area for this, you know, we decide that we we're gonna have a a toilet and we, I don't know, it's it's kind of a, it's kind of a bad thing. So why is that toilet, instead of down there, instead of that nice portasand that we can put down there? Why are we gonna even get involved in in this type of a uh thing? I don't think it's, I don't think it makes sense. And as Star even said, really, you need one up on Main Street. Okay, so I I don't know. I'm not, I'm not seeing that. But I'm, but I'm what I'm saying, it's it's no good. Oh, and by the way, there's a few other things that were were in that email about uh what would go on. If we leave this park open, if we don't, if we don't keep it from dawn to dusk, uh that's a problem. Nighttime, oh, if we don't have lights there at nighttime, we got a problem. If we have lights there at nighttime, we're gonna be paying for them. Uh the signs that are around the park right now, got no smoking. If you had those parties like you're supposed to, who's gonna, who's gonna be the uh the enforcement for? No smoking, no alcohol in the in the uh in in the park area, right? Who's gonna, who's gonna enforce this? It's code of conduct that they mentioned in there? Who's gonna enforce that? Where where is that coming from? You know, even then again, too, and one more thing, last thing that I'll 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 say is, if they are doing any type of uh, we, grills were mentioned. So if there was uh barbecue and hamburgers or something and it's not, it's not administered to and cleaned up immediately afterward, there's animals and all kinds of other things going on down there. And it was two weeks ago, pointed out the front door, that there's a bear floating around down there. So this this isn't attractive for that. Rules would attract bears, the toilets will attract crime. Okay, it's it's kind of simple. Uh so I I'm I'm adamantly against it in its current iteration, but definitely not against it if it was a pavilion that was there, open for uh, you know, open air. There's a tour, there's a portasand down fifteen, twenty, thirty-five feet away. You can go use that. You can go and have a fun day out there, and that's all, that's all well and good. But not when we have other things that are gonna attract the uh the unwelcome element that can come down with that and that can also uh literally change the face of the flats, the neighborhood, you know? For the, there's there's people that are there for their quiet, and that's why I bought the house. And I don't know, I I see that change coming, and it's it's uh, it's not for the better. So, you know, like you said, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Valerie Gregoretti. I live at thirty-one third street. Um so I'm directly across from the empty space we're talking about where Durham's might lease um a parking area for you guys. Um that's something that hasn't been touched upon yet in the sense of how does it affect the property values on that street? I live right there. I don't want to look at a parking lot right now. Um, you know, we all enjoy the beautiful views we have in our neighborhood. Um, I lived on the island where I lived in an apartment that looked at a parking lot. I moved up here because I get to look at grass and trees and people walking their dogs and just lovely things. So wild animals, deer. Um, I don't want to look at cars in a lot. Um, how does this affect property values in the flats, too, is another thing I just want to bring up? I do understand that town could use a better community center, but I don't think that's the correct location for it. I think everybody that lives in that neighborhood would be impacted by that um for resale value. Just it might be a deterrent for future buyers. That's the only thing I want to bring up to your attention.
Um, a point of clarification, when we talk about parking lots, it would not be gravelled. We got permission to maybe put some lines in there if we need to direct people.
Either way, it could potentially be twenty cars parked across the street from my house.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you.
Yep. Uh I got Doreen first, Bernie. How you feeling?
Yeah, I haven't gone to meetings or anything about this whole thing because we've been laid up in different ways. We've been in the house we're in right there at the playground since nineteen sixty-six. Between the Krauses and the Feldusens and the Rasmussen's and the Lubens, we built the first playground down there. Got money. We had things that they can't have now, slides, monkey bars and things like that. But it was the playground and the ball field was the little league field. And now, you know, all this talk about the pavilion, I would like to see the garden, poles taken down. Just put a metal little roof so some people go down and they can't stay there in the summertime. It's so hot. Just something to get, you know, a couple of picnic tables under. They've had parties down there lately. People clean up after it. It's not like it's a horrible thing. It's great. I love seeing it. But I mean, it it just seems like it's all getting out of hand. So I probably have people that don't want to hear some of the things, and I don't want to say anything more. As far as uh Durham's, Howard and Cindy Barnes maintains that themselves.
Yes, we do.
They don't get. They don't get paid to do that, and they do a beautiful job. People walk their dogs through there, we have. Uh, the whole flats now is a, what do they call it? Walking trail, and they, wonderful people come down and walk their dogs, and they're picking up. I would like to see more cans around, that people can put those blue bags, because sometimes you see them, they're just.
I'll have to hire somebody to empty them.
Well, you can ask, they can hire other people. But just, I would, you know, Roger Durham, I don't know if he's, knows where the flats is. As far as, you know, caring about, taking care of it. So, that's a lot to say.
Thank you.
Well, I just heard the details about this tonight, listening to this. And I got a couple observations and maybe a definition. Thirty by fifty is not a, say, well, that's a bar. Uh, when somebody get out of shape, they do. Sixteen by twenty-four, six picnic tables, you're out of the shape. Thirty by fifty is a barn. It's, you know, then have a bathroom, and all this stuff, for a job, I agree. But the size of it's ridiculous. That's my observation as a taxpayer.
Thank you. Before I go to Zoom, is there anybody else in the room?
Um, Naomi Holick, I live in the flats, and I have watched piecemeal. Things going on to that, who is a beautiful area. Trees that were absolutely beautiful gave shade, were cut down, I don't know why. Somebody says something about sap falling down, which trees, pine trees do do that. Uh, and then that walkway is ridiculous. It it just, it it was there and halfway stopped. And it's, you know, I mean, I don't know what the point is, I guess my point is, I know that there was some sort of comprehensive plan. Uh, drawn up in the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, but we still really think it's piecemeal. And I don't see a a plan that, I mean, it seems to me before the pavilion is put in. Unless for some reason, uh, you're worried about losing the grant money. There should be a viable contemporary plan now. To include things like whatever it was you people wanted, pickleball courts. Fork up the um, the baseball, the baseball yard, baseball uh area. And uh, I ca- I still can't get over the fact that those trees were cut down, and now that there's a demand for shade. I mean, it just makes no sense to me. And the other, the other thing is that they were replaced by twigs, which I guess were donated. All of which died within about two months of being planted, except for two, actually, they're still hanging on. So I would just say, why not have a full-blown plan? That you know when you can implement it, what stage is what, and and then talk about a pavilion that's not. Uh, fifty feet long, because that is completely crazy, that's all, sorry.
Naomi, may I ask you a quick question? The trees were before my time on the flats. Um, I know some trees have been taken out by private landowners, and I don't think those are the trees you're talking about. Where were the trees?
Where Harvey has his house now, there there was a line of trees that separated the park from.
So it was parallel, it was parallel to the path.
I have one other up here for public comment. Yeah.
Yes.
Let's, let's start with, oh, I've got standing up front.
I'm Jill, first time caller, long-term listener. Seasonal resident of the flats since two thousand eighteen, full-time resident since June fifteenth. So, um, I I echo, support, build on. What everyone um has said here, I'll just try to pick on my notes that are ads and not duplicative. So the the pavilion and and the idea of shade and and, you know, maybe some some water fountains, um, it's it's great. You know, to see attention um going to ongoing improvement, so. Thank you, you know, to this playground, which is a place in the center of, I think the report talked about how densely populated. Um, it is, I'd also talk about how intricately balanced um this, this. Special place, as Iris said when I first moved here, is, and it's not just the humans, it's the wildlife. It's, uh, that's you were um saying, Val, um, are, you've got like twenty-five deer down there, five different families. Um, so all of this, and then and then the seasonal visitors, there's just such an intricate balance to to maintain. So I I guess just the ads and or the questions I have to help me understand. And to try to influence the choices that you all will be making on on our behalf, and thank you for your service. Um, we're not up here, you guys are, and you guys do really tough work and make really hard choices. So, thank you for, you know, all this public comment. The, the, I have two themes. The visual coherence and functional completeness. So, and I and I think a couple of people have spoken to this, like, today, um, there's a a lot of individual parts. That don't um quite mesh, you know, there are some really nice new, a couple of new lovely benches. Um, next to the rusting um uh trash bins. Um, there's the half-finished walkway that many people have spoken about. There are the plantings in the triangular entrance ways that were so nice, I remember those were really vibrant when I first came, I don't think they've been replanted. And then the severely underused exercise trail, I guess, I'm not even laughing, I'm just like. So, my questions are, like, I went also about this, everyone's commented on the size. In terms of visual coherence and functional completeness. Is there a way we could see a rendering of options and variations? Based on a lot of this feedback and a lot of your intentions.
The reason that I opened the public comment is because we have good specifications here. One of the things that has hurt this process is that because of the grant, and because we are a municipality. The way that we have to do this is very time-constrained with what they gave us. But yes, there will be some renderings coming up, and before we even looked at the renderings that we have here. We wanted to get the input of what you've got. So that when we make a decision.
Yeah.
We're least informed on what you want and don't want.
And and I think because of um how the money is done, and I used to work in a nonprofit, I've I've worked in both nonprofit. Very grant-driven and private sector, I understand that, it's very hard to work towards coherence. You know, the way that money is raised and and spent really hard. But one of the things I would say is like about the um exercise trail, which by observation. I've literally never seen someone use it, is there an opportunity in this process going forward? Um, to do more evaluation and assessment, so we can pivot. And and, you know, within that space, really use it to its maximum. So I'm just, as someone who used to be a nonprofit, evaluation is always critical to grant writing. And giving and and getting more money, so I I didn't really see anything in there. Um, I just, I wanted to ask about that. And then every, a lot of folks have spoken about maintenance and upkeep and um. You know, we don't have a parks department, and those are the organizations that really manage and and provide accountability. So, it's just such a tough spot of of how to create something amazing. And then how to maintain it and have accountability around it. Um, I have stuff here around programming and private events, I echo the concerns. And the um concerns around the consequences and the impact on this very. Intricately balanced residential quiet community, I live there for, you know, the lack of sound pollution, the lack of light pollution. It's, it's, you know, but I'll just put that out there. Uh, everyone's spoken about the kitchen, I don't think I have to mention that. The only thing I will say, and I guess this is from my. You know, being in in private and and nonprofit um business, you know, there's this concept of uh. Build, partner, buy, and every time, and I I don't know if that applies, I'm sorry, I don't have my civics up to date. But every time you're making an investment, you ask yourself that question, is this a build moment? Is this a partner moment, you know, or is this a buy moment? I don't think we're in the business of buying. But when the kitchen came up, I was like, well, isn't that an amazing collaborative opportunity? Versus a, let's put it here, like, my question was like, why here? You know, why not have some collaborations or partnerships with the restaurants or the union? I know those are private places, but that's partnership ideas, so that's just what came to mind. And, yeah, you know, on the flyer that you distribute that I I pinned to my wall around the dates of these meetings, I'm gonna come to more. You know, it it talks about how this is here for us to be heard, one of the successes of government is when your elected officials learn what is on your mind. So, um, thank you for listening, and again, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Yes, Matt.
Thanks, Cass Collins, live in the flats. Um, just a quick point to Jill, um, Jill talked about upkeep for this. Pavilion idea, uh, and it reminded me of the the people who got together in the city. To take care of Central Park, when Central Park is falling apart. And um, they started a conservancy. And they did amazing things, and did take care of the park, and did make it a really. Great place to enjoy in the middle of a very dense city. Um, and sure, there are crime problems, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not denying that. But um, it's also uh, it's a great, anyway, maybe we could get something together about that, a conservancy. A group um that would, you know, volunteer to take care of the the space and and do fundraising. So, anyway, just one idea, and then I just wanna make a point about the Chi Hive, because there's been a lot of talk about. You know, sort of corporate entities taking over this, this park and using it for for profit-making. The Chi Hive has been such an amazing, and, yeah, my daughter works for them, so. But they have been an amazing asset in our community. I mean, they've done, and they, a lot of the work that they do is nonprofit. In fact, I think they're starting a nonprofit, um, or looking towards starting a nonprofit. To provide the kind of activities that, you know, our children and my grandchildren and your grandchildren can enjoy. Um, for generations, so, you know, I don't see it as a big corporate. Um, entity taking over our. Public spaces, so, I think that's all.
Hold on one second, I got one in the back that hasn't gone yet.
My name is Denise Shambun, and I live outside. Bottom Mountain, on the other side of Bottom Mountain, and. We had a big discussion with the first meeting of doing the multi-generation park down there. And there was a big, you know, beautiful architect work and everything like that, and the pavilion, I think that was the main. A lot of people did not agree with it because it was so big, and I think from sitting here today, that is another thing, it's so big. You have to understand, we use that park for certain things. The Chi Hive put on, they do, I think, tai chi and then martial arts in the afternoon on Saturdays. Which I think is a great thing for community. They did a basketball program, my twins did it down there. Yeah, it was a little expensive, but you know what, they had fun doing it, and they picked up all their garbage, they put it in the garbage can. I mean, there was, I mean, we have one instant where we have to say. There was other people using it, and, you know, now we have, now we know you have to reserve it or something like that. So I, and I think we all work together to do something like that. My, I think what the whole thing is, is that when you throw out big words like pavilion. People automatically say, who's gonna maintain it? Like, my husband Justin was like, honey, do they need, does it need to be that big? I don't think it does. I think we need to have some kind of shade, I think we need to have, like, if it rains. You know, kids, we use it for so many different things, we wanna get the baseball field going. We had another presentation where, you know, and I think that is what we need. We need to have more kids down there using, and adults. What I don't see is your drugs and your crime rate going up. Because. We were down there playing basketball, my kids, my boys, they are, they're athletic. A person came up and started getting aggressive, and my kids were like, you know what, buddy, if you wanna join us, join us. If you wanna be obnoxious and cursed, then mom's just gonna have to ask you to leave, and you don't want her to do that. I mean, and and they're very honest, I mean, they're very, and they're guys like, what do you mean? And he's like, listen, if you wanna play with us, play with us. He's like, alright, you know, then he lit a cigarette up, and my other twin was like, there's no smoking here. You can go over there, and make sure you pick your butt up, make sure it's that before you put it in the garbage. You know, and I think. The Tuscan Youth Commission has done so much for the community, and I think they wanna continue doing. And I, I just, I don't feel that there's gonna be an influx of crime related to the bill. And I mean, the bathrooms, my kids won't, I mean, I don't use them. And I know my boys, they're different than girls, so they don't have a problem with that, because, you know, getting them to shower anyways, like, fight. So, um, I mean, I understand that, very first, and I. I think what it is, they need more shade down there, the park, the walkway has to get finished. The garden has to get taken down, because it's just, it's an eyesore. And things have to be brought into the community down there, that's gonna help everybody, not just a certain. You know, and yes, the Tuscan Community Youth Commission puts on so many good things down there, and I think you guys need to embrace that. Come down there, enjoy it, I mean, I'm not saying, you know, for the Halloween thing. We, they kind of moved that around, but I mean, it's just, they're working really hard, and everybody's working hard. We're all watching after each other, like, if somebody's speeding, I mean, we all yell at them, throw them. But I think you guys are taking this to a point where.
Aren't the comments supposed to be addressed at the board?
Yes. Don't worry, it's just getting ready to cut off, do we have anybody else, are you almost done? Thank you. Do we have anybody else? One last time, and then I wanna go there, so that we can continue on. Oh, yes, you are.
I I just wanna say, for the record, you can hear me, is there anyone who can hear me? Just for the record.
I just told her to come up here while you're talking.
As far as the Chi Hive is concerned, they are a benefit to this community. It was only used as an example because someone had said if the Chi Hive wanted to do something. There is nothing wrong with the Chi Hive, they do everything according to oil, and they're fine, nothing. My thought is, we could use that area if the walkway was continued. But if there is, and I don't know whether or not this is something that's part of the um. Brand. If it's an open pavilion with some benches and tables. People will come more because they have a place for shield of sun. They will be able to utilize it, it won't be so brutally hot all the time. So if it's an open pavilion, it makes much more sense than. Than closing it in and changing the entire dynamic. It is not for commercial use, it is for the use of children, their families. Adults to enjoy this fabulous space in the flats, the residential flats. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna be very brief, um, but I feel like I should say something, as my husband are literally renovating a house that will abut the pavilion and abut the, that does abut the park. My name is Marcy, yes.
My name is Marcy, yes.
Larry's mom.
Larry's mom, yeah, um, so I I fully support this idea of adding shade, you know. Beautifying the park, finish the walkway, which I walk, you know, along many times a day. Um, but it's a little bit, I I haven't been in the front of them, but it's a little bit confusing to me to hear about these big plans for the structure that will need to be. Maintain after every party, like who wipes down the counter, who gets rid of the crumbs, who locks the door, music levels, things that seem like they can really. Sort of snowball at um, pretty quickly. And yet I've seen in the two years I've been in the flats, a community garden going from having, you know, some basil that was visible. And a lavender plant to just sort of completely overgrown, so it's a structure that's gonna need much more maintenance. Is a little bit scary to conceive of, and things like, so if someone's gonna rent this out and have a party. Who's gonna monitor the the music level for for the residents, is there gonna be someone, every party on hand doing this? Sure, you know, I know most of this has been, has been said before, but um. You know, so if someone isn't wiping down the counter after every party, then move, then more creatures come and people that live right there. Start to deal with that sort of thing, um, doesn't have a lock on it, all these sorts of things, and everything else I really agree with what I've said, but. Seems like for shade, you know, a gazebo, a beautiful little gazebo could go a really long way, so that's all.
Thank you. Do you have anybody, Lee, online? Okay, I'm gonna close a couple of comments, and let's look at some drawings and discuss this as a board. These are the. Did you get a little copy? Uh, pictures, start with the first. Any of the pictures, there you go. That's fine, that's start. Who's in control? Just give the boards the courtesy of having a discussion, this is the first time they've seen it. Um, show me. The other, no, I want the other picture. There's some things in there that were discussed. Yep, that one's fine, and then there should be, give me the one that's got the. No. That one. Now, one of the things that. That Carl, folks, could you just give me a minute, please, just so we can discuss this and you can hear us? Um, as discussed at previous meeting, several options. And choose to go with one version, um, with the eye towards the budget. The double columns versus a single columns, they, he's got double and triple columns in there. Well, they're thinner, they do add to the cost of it, so I know the committee had talked about um, single columns, but utilizing. The concrete on the bottom of the poles in order to make those as sitting areas. Um, and then if they went into, and we don't have a picture of a single column, other than if you look at the. Second column from the right in the front, that would be what it would look like, there you go. Um, obviously, if there was no bathroom or kitchen, then it would be open like that. One of the reasons that it went with that type of design for the post was because it's in a flood area. It would allow the water to go through the pavilion without taking off. And wrecking the pavilion. Uh, what do we have as far as? So I guess for the board to discuss. I mean, obviously, we've got an issue with a bathroom and a room that is considered a kitchen, but has the running water in it.
And and the size, I think it's an.
Well, let's, let's start with the bathroom and the kitchen.
Okay, um, the public is saying they don't want the bathroom.
And they don't want the kitchen.
But I, I think that they thought mostly that the kitchen was a kitchen with a stove.
But my concern about, this would be a plumbed bathroom.
Yes.
That needs to be heated. And it just seems, another element of 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 maintenance.
Well, I've already got Jane on the back. Just give us some time, please. I hear what Jane said, I hear what you said, well, let's knock the bathroom off, for starts. Let's cut the chase and get rid of this stuff that's gonna. Be that way.
Right. I think the serving area is not an objection, I think.
That, if we plumb that, it's gonna need to either be shut down in the winter.
Yeah, I think.
What do you do, it is an open serving area? The concept that was here was that it could be closed off.
Well, that was probably because of the hot plate and water.
Or do we reduce the size of this, take out the bathroom, take out the kitchen, see how it works with an eye towards.
I I think that's, the public is really saying the size is uh, objection, so I think if we reduce the size. Everybody wants shade, that gives shade, and remove the bathroom, remove the kitchen. And that might satisfy the needs of the the park.
Okay, we're gonna need a size in order to. This size that we've got here is fifty-two by twenty-eight.
Fifty-two by twenty-eight?
Fifty-two by twenty-eight.
What um, what happens if we just go like that?
I can't see what you're doing.
Take away the bathroom, take away the kitchen and just make the end of the the pavilion there.
Does the square footage or the footprint that you're talking about include the extension of the cement in front? Is that in addition to that footprint, or are we going off of the slab?
No, that's the, we're. But yes, it's going up by the roof.
So the actual square footage then is one thousand four hundred and sixteen is presented.
What dimension are you going by?
I'm going by fifty-two times twenty-eight.
That's the one that's being presented, yeah.
I mean, like, I've said this before, my house is twenty by forty.
Well, it's a good place for a party.
But I'm saying, this just seems so big, I mean, it's bigger than my, the 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 footprint of my own.
So if we get down to two. Brings, if we take off, I mean, just looking at it, if we took off the bathroom and the kitchen, that's forty feet.
Now, what you've also got is just the two foot overhang.
Yeah, but that was, that was, that was done.
But there's still seating areas there.
Yeah, that was done to protect uh, from the rain.
Correct. So let's start with the width. Right now, what's presented here is twenty-four. It's twenty-eight, it's twenty-four uh, uh, in the center with a two foot overhang on each side.
No, it's twenty.
Your standard picnic table is what, eight feet long, six feet long?
It's twenty-eight and then two feet.
She had a, she had a error, goes for there, goes for there.
Yeah. And see, the twenty-eight is here, so this is the pavilion.
Correct.
So it's twenty-eight feet and plus the two feet.
May I ask just a couple of questions? Number one, when do we have to be compliant with the grant, when does ground need to be broken by?
We would need to have, tonight, have this plan approved on size so that. The architect can then take it and. Get it back to us so that we could put it out within the next two to three days to have bid specs and bids come back by next meeting.
To to Jill's point, in terms of comparisons, it seems like. Us with a ruler is less thorough than asking Carl for three sizing examples. No, I understand, but but we're, we're kind of shooting in the dark here within the context of what's going on with the park.
Not really, because what we've got is, we've got a picture of a pavilion that the the committee had worked on. What we don't have is what the final size is going to be. Cause that, there's three things that we've taken from the public, we don't want a bathroom, we don't want a kitchen, and we don't like the size. But they're not against putting shade out.
Enclosed, we don't want any.
It's not enclosed. So we, we've taken those three things into consideration. So really, what we need to do is the board has come up with a size to say to Carl, take this design with this size.
Are there. Rules and regulations about this type of building that relate to the size?
The.
For example, the ratio, is the ratio of width and length. Standardized so that we just tell Carl shrink it by twenty percent, shrink it by forty.
What you don't wanna do is, once you start increasing your width, then your trust costs get more because they're not standard trust sizes. So increasing it, I, that is the reason why the thirty, or the twenty-eight feet was a trip. Because originally, they had talked about a thirty-foot width, and a thirty-foot is a special trust size so that it was reduced down to twenty-eight. Um, cause the trusts will be built. Offsite and trucked into what size they wanna have.
Go back to.
So if you're, if your standard picnic table is six feet.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Okay, and you put.
Is it six or eight?
You can hit him six or eight, I mean, most smaller ones that are easier to use, so if you've got two picnic tables end to end or. Uh, row between them, you're looking at twelve feet for the picnic tables. Um, you know, do you go eighteen feet instead of twenty-eight, you reduce it by ten feet that way.
Um, but that doesn't give walking space.
Sure, you've got, if you've got a uh, six-foot picnic table.
Now you're back to six feet.
Yeah, you're the six-foot table.
Yeah.
And then you gotta, if if this is a pavilion. And you've got a six-foot table here and a six-foot table here, and a center aisle here, and that center aisle is, say, four feet. The six, six is twelve and four. The sixteen feet, so if you have an eighteen-foot pavilion.
Harvey has his hand up, I know public comments over.
Go ahead, Harvey.
Thank you, thanks a lot. So I know that one thing that that we discussed on the committee is uh, the orientation of of this pavilion. Whether it's gonna run east to west or north to south. And since everyone is talking about having a need for shade, one of the reasons why we're limited in our discussion for the committee. Why it couldn't go uh, north to south, uh, which would provide more shade to the park. Because it would run into this border sewer line, but now that it's being reduced in size. It's possible that the orientation then.
Can go north to south.
Can go north to south, which would provide the most shade for the park, even if at sunset through the afternoon. It would cast a shadow across the park, so I just wanted to offer that.
Yeah, cause that's one of the things I I believe the committee is still open on, is the actual placement of where it will be. I believe more towards fourth.
I don't think placement enters into what we have to get to today. It's just size because it's gonna go out for bid. Yeah, and then that could be a committee choice later. So eighteen feet, I think, might be too small, actually.
According to the internet, the average length of a picnic table is six.
Six?
Yeah.
Okay, good, so six.
A rectangular.
Okay. So six, six. So three across, you think twenty-eight is too big?
I do.
Okay, alright. Eighteen though? Eighteen is pretty small.
Eighteen allows for two feet, an aisle of two feet and two feet on either side, so in essence, you will be creating. Yeah, two feet, two, two, two and.
Okay, so if you had two tables, two, two, how many do you want to be able to go? And you don't want it all tables either. Well, okay, let's look up your internet, how many people does a six-foot table?
Six.
Six.
Three on each side.
So that's twelve, twenty-four.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. You think that's the group size?
I'm thinking twenty by twenty-four.
Twenty by twenty-four.
Your normal two-car garage is twenty-four square, twenty-four by twenty-four. Not overly huge.
So that's four hundred and eighty square feet. Isn't it?
Yeah. It's not.
So it's basically a third of the size that we were originally speaking of, and maybe a slab is extended as it is in this design.
Yes, yeah, you would have a slab outside.
Slab.
In order to have the grade going up to make it ADA compliant.
How many picnic tables is twenty-five, twenty-four?
Six.
Six, with no room in between.
No, with.
Little bit, it's all seating then.
Well, but then we have the slab up front, and I think that.
Well, the slab isn't underneath the uh, uh, roof. Well, frankly, I think twenty by twenty-four is too small, but if I'm overruled, I'm over.
Can we ask, can we ask Carl for two designs, one that is twenty by?
That's the thing about Sullivan one eighty, I don't understand, we are mandated on how we can spend our money, and if it's. A twenty thousand dollar capital project, we have to put it out to bid, we have to, and they want it, you know.
Can we ask Carl to, at the very least, give us a capacity study with the tables and and that placement in them?
What you can say to Carl is twenty by twenty-four, but make it's the appropriate size for. Um, standard lumber.
Well, twenty by twenty-four will be your standard lumber, I mean, yeah, twenty-four by twenty-four would be a standard. Um, trust system that he was doing in there, um, the other thing, you know, he's. One of the other things that they had was for natural lighting being in there.
Yeah, that's a skylight. Um, just to. Address Jane's concern, the average picnic table at the high end is thirty inches wide. Therefore, it would take up about ninety inches each, you know, for the three tables. So I don't think of the size that Ben is suggesting that we would be limited, it would not all be seating. I think there would still be room for a beverage table or whatever people need.
What they bring in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, well, I think the public wants it smaller, make it smaller. And you know what? There's always changes later.
I think that's where we start.
Not just enter something that I usually overlook, one of the things that I heard. It's not just the size of this thing, but the design. You know, you have to have something that cleans and plants, and something that doesn't look like the elevated New York City subway stop. I think that should be taken into consideration when the law was presented.
It's an open design.
Yeah, well, yes, it was, it's an open design so that floodwater would go through it. That was, that was the whole thing, and burning has.
Yeah, yeah.
That I think, I think we needed.
Can you just ask for some fans of twenty by twenty four? No?
I just, you know, look, I wasn't on the committee, so I'm I'm putting my war in at the last minute here. Just seems to me, my problem is. The grant seems to be driving the the timing.
The money back, but you'll never get another one.
No, I understand. I understand that. It's not just giving up the the grant. It's giving up the possibility of getting further grants. But I just feel when we're dealing with the water and the millions of dollars for the water systems and that. Grants are a great means to an end. Here, the grant seems to be the end. You know, that bothers.
I've I've, there is enough money in Arthur that we can, we can continue this conversation.
I I would just love to see.
Doesn't matter, you're still gonna give it back.
Right.
I would love to see.
That is a problem.
Yeah.
A conversation with someone like Aaron for four different, and this is, I'm just throwing this out. I wasn't on the committee. And I'm sorry to be a jerk coming in at the last minute. This looks very heavy to me. She referred to it as a subway station. This kind of looks both kind of Bethel Woodsy and a little just heavy. It doesn't look organic to the area. If someone like Aaron could come up with four individual pergolas, each, you know. And then you let uh morning glories and wisteria overwhelm them. You you mitigate the shade, you know, the the shade problem. And four pergolas seem more organic to a kind of rural, and again, I'm not an architect. I'm not a. This is just, I'm just throwing this out.
You're in for a living, huh?
Exactly.
Seeing one, we're gonna have more trouble placing four.
I did, I I I just threw that out as a kind of more, a smaller footprint. Let wisteria provide the shade, let, you know, nature go back to providing shade. You know, there's a great deal of mourning for these dead tick bearing trees, but uh.
The ticks are gonna be there within the trees.
We're still not into public comment.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
You had a tick. Is it possible? I have not read the grant and I'm not on the committee either, but there is a slab that would be required for whatever we do. Is that an appropriate use?
No.
No.
Yeah, it has to be the realization of that.
The slab is not a requirement.
No, I'm saying would it fulfill the need for us to take the grant as the foundation of something that is still being. See, to me, the slab is part of the problem. It's it's the the heavy kind of corporate urban look. I mean, that's why, that's why I'm just throwing out the pergola idea. I'm I'm not a landscaper, like, but someone like Aaron, it just seemed would be probably a cheaper solution. And a, a little.
Or it's from the architect, huh, plans for the building committee. We'll still need architect plan.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. But is a pergola your building? I'd have to ask Jim that. Is is, it seems like a, you know, a garden. Do we, do we send this back to committee? And we have a committee meeting this week.
Yeah.
Um, and then we'll talk to Solomon one eighty and see, see where we're at. With them, I I. We were tight to begin with, with, you know, one eighty does wonderful things, but when you're dealing with municipalities that have to.
Right.
Cross Ts and Is, you know, for the controller's office, it it makes it.
Yeah, I just thought I couldn't vote on this, given the schedule, you know what I mean? I just feel like I'm being rushed and. Being asked to, okay, some variation of that. Well, I'm not that thrilled with that, you know what I mean? I like the picture.
I I.
It's like something in Queens, I don't know.
Maybe it's just too big. I don't know.
Harvey, what is your availability this week?
I'll make myself available any day, anytime.
All right. What time do you eat lunch?
Generally, noon.
Okay, that sounds like a good time.
Okay.
Um, can we, do we? Do we dare, do we dare recess this building to see if we can get this back on track?
Yeah, that's the only way we can.
Recession out of urine, right?
Okay, I think we have to.
Okay.
Is this a big grant?
Can can the board agree on these?
Yeah, that that that's the one thing we do need from the board in order to do the Irish. The board does need to agree on some stuff to give to the committee. Um, I think size is the biggest one.
Size, kitchen, toilet. Um, ADA, it is ADA, right?
Are we good at the twenty by twenty four?
I think that is, I think Carl has to be part of this.
Okay.
This uh discussion.
So we'll be looking for reduction.
Yes. And a way that it can be done as affordably with trusses and that type, you know.
Yeah, that's right.
Off the shelf, but twenty by twenty four would would fulfill many of the concerns that have been discussed. And still allow what the primary function was. And in addition to that, capacity would take care of some of the concerns. About parking or parties being too big or the scale on which people would be using.
Okay, and what about toilet? We agree, no. Take it out.
Yes, good time.
Kitchen, we agree, no. But do we want a serving area? I guess, no. It sounds like.
I would ask Carl what the options would be for that.
If you're gonna take up space on a smaller building.
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking.
I'm just thinking a shelf, but goodbye, school.
Yeah. Right, Harvey?
I didn't hear that actually.
Kitchen out.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I heard.
Yeah, okay. All right, so essentially, we're just going to meet and talk about uh twenty by twenty four.
So Jane, Ben?
Yes.
Can I ask, just, it's Crystal, um as a, as Tustin youth chair on that, um. I'm just wondering, with the size reduction, that is also gonna go in line with the programming. That Tustin youth is hoping to help maintain throughout the season. So a, an area to have, and I would suggest a closed area, a closed by six P M area for at least a kitchen space. Um, for events for us to be able to put on for the community as a whole, something that can be locked. I think that the town board should think about that before they decide to reduce the space completely. Either a lock, if you wanna put a bathroom, it should be locked by a certain hour, or a kitchen space, we lock by a certain hour. But I'm just thinking that you reducing the size right now of the, you're reducing the size of the roof. That reduces the space underneath that we can utilize, especially once you start to break ground and need to do such for drainage and stuff. Does that make sense?
Well, we hear you, Crystal, but um we also hear the public and we're talking at six foot tables. We had how many altogether?
Uh, six times six for a capacity of thirty six.
Yeah, so we can get thirty six adults, which would mean maybe more kids.
Forty eight kids.
Yeah, I I think.
You're saying the adults are that big?
I I don't think that, uh, I think that might be appropriate for this time.
Um, I will leave it up to you to, we'll figure out from Carl when he's available to meet with the committee. And we'll let Harvey work harder than.
I'm sorry. I hold my hand raised in the public comment and no one um paid attention to the raised hand.
And you are?
Lisa DeAndrea. I just wanted to echo something that um Crystal had mentioned with respect to the children's programming. Um, I don't know if the town board is aware that the town of Bethel have a similar town park. With a giant pavilion, much smaller than what you guys are proposing. And um or similar to what you're proposing, but it also does have a ba- two bathrooms that are locked at six o'clock when the park closes. As well as a kitchen with two refrigerators, a full stove, storage and um. Two sinks as well as a microwave. And that is also locked when the town park closes and it's done at six o'clock, everything is locked. Included in the storage area are things for the children to play with. So if you're looking to create a space for the town of Tustin children. To have someplace to go, to be able to do after school activities or to have activities during the summer. Or even possibly summer camps like what the Tustin youth has been doing this year. That should also be taken into consideration. I understand that the public or nearby residents. Being it, it it's a park. It's what it's meant to be, to be enjoyed. And right now, no one's enjoying it because there's no shelter. And you you just can't use the facility. So I apologize to interrupt, but I just wanted to echo what Crystal was saying. I think that, you know, making it smaller and not having bathrooms is a big mistake. At the flats, don't come because of the lack of shade, well as the lack of bathrooms. Small children and elderly have no place to go.
Oh. Okay, so can we recess?
Yeah, we'll have to recess, but first I gotta do my new business.
Oh.
And the rest of my old business.
Okay.
Um, but your new old business, uh, the roof repairs, I'm waiting for, at ninety three main, I'm waiting for one more quote. Um, I got one quote right now from Straight Line for four thousand dollars. Um, in talking to some roofers that seem to be in line, so. You know, hopefully you get a second quote or at least get a third person I called to give me a quote, otherwise. We'll just go with the one that we've got. Uh, two ten Bridge Street, the A C drain, uh, Olson's supposed to get back to me on when they're gonna repair the drain. But the thing from upstairs, um, first floor unit Olson's supposed to also let me know when they're gonna install that. She's got David for buyer for the basement. Um, I haven't done anything as I've got one quote on that. Uh, we'll have to determine if that's something we, we wanna utilize. Or if I get the quotes for the heat pumps, that was a twelve thousand dollars that I've gotten from Olson. Uh, I don't think we're gonna need the. Yeah, I don't think we'll, so sort of, the 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 one quarter of the D V N fire was four thousand dollars. It's twelve thousand and change for the heating and cooling, so. I think we're gonna be okay without that. Um, new business, ten seven authorization for beautification to utilize the parking area. For their plant swap on October seventh.
I'll make them auction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Uh, here we go back to public comment before we close. I don't know, lead pipe online. Uh, do you need anything more for the lead pipe inventory?
I guess I just need permission for um Delaware engineering to go forward.
I make a motion for Delaware engineering to move forward on our lead pipe inventory. All favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Give me anything else in years that I don't have any new business, so we have missed. Iris.
I would like to know, is the, is there a possibility of additional people coming into the committee at this point? Since there's been so much open discussion about it?
We've got five on the committee right now. I think we'd be better off just bringing plans out. Um. We get committees more than five people, it tends to get a little muddy.
So can anybody sit in?
We can make, I don't see why people can't sit in on any of our committees.
Yeah.
We'll just hold, what we'll do is we'll hold them here and have uh Crystal put them, announce them on the uh. On the Facebook and on the town website.
I'll call you.
Yeah, there's absolutely no reason why you couldn't. Absolutely.
That's, yes.
Yeah, yes, Bernie.
Well, then you're listening to this. I think the board wants the direction they're going, because it was originally to provide shade. You're building a Taj Mahal. What's wrong with just building a simple pole barn?
Well, that's what we're doing. We're, we're stepping back, we're re-meeting.
That that's by my, you're gonna wish you had mine pitch, because the way it's set up from the picture, you're gonna have a bird problem.
What problem?
Bird, they're gonna build nests up in there.
Not if you put it.
Yeah, you throw the, there you go.
And then build the cement instead of crushed stone. Extend it out eighteen feet on the shade side. It's less, you put chairs, whatever.
I have a question about, in relation to what Kevin said about the grant. When was this grant originally, you know, applied for or food?
Months ago.
Okay.
It was, it was on the agenda, approved by the board. I think it had to be March that it went in.
But that's when the grant went in in March.
Yeah, we didn't get approval till about.
Was it June?
No, May.
But it was, you have approval in May, but the committee was set in June.
And then there's been, has there been committee meetings?
I can't hear you.
Yeah, there's been committee meetings.
Yes.
So is there a chance that, and it's from one eighty, from Renon?
Yeah.
That there will be a chance to have another grant in the future, once the committee decides really what is best for that area? And more.
What what's gonna, what's gonna happen is the committee's gonna re-meet. We'll see if one eighty will give an extension on it. If they don't, we'll have to give it back. That will hurt us in the future for getting grants from one eighty.
Well, given the time constraint, I would hope that they would understand and understand also that this proposal is going into a residential area. And that none of the residents are really happy with what has come up. And and to Kevin's point, i- i- you know, you're really put on the spot because of the time.
Yeah, the the board's been put on the spot and that's why they're taking a step back.
Correct.
Um, to be fair, and I think there needs to be some communication amongst all of the people in town. It's been a park that's been in the center of town for all of the people in town.
I have been.
Including the people that live out lava in.
You know.
Ten Mile.
But we live there. I've been, I grew up in this town. I bought my house on the river thirty years ago. I raise, I brought my kids here every summer, my great-grandchildren are coming up here. That, and I appreciate everything. That the youth commission does, ladies do a phenomenal job. And but there has to be some consideration of. It is a residential area and also to Anthony's point of what's going to be coming in when there is a permanent structure there. So there really has to be more discussion and more input. I mean, we just found out about this a week ago. We, you know, I know that you've had it on your agenda, but it really wasn't very well broadcast.
Do you really sure I have with that? Is we're one of the few towns that still has Zoom. You guys can sit at your house and watch us.
Right.
It's not a hard lift.
No, I know.
So.
I understand.
You know, I, and I'm not, I'm not finding fault with you at all. I'm just saying, when I hear people say, oh, man, this, this, this really wasn't well. Well prepared or well run out.
Remember, Kevin said that he wasn't, you know, like.
But this is.
Being, you're being rushed into something that's going to impact this residential.
When you say you didn't know anything about it at all. Well, there have been people say that. And and that's, that kinda, I guess I get frustrated with that. Because, you know, everybody wanted Zoom and it was great. I get six people to meeting. Until something is a little bit amiss, which is fine. I wish it all come to the meetings all the time. I really do, even if it was on Zoom, because it it, it would make things flow a lot easier, a lot less misinformation would get out there. You know, I, one thing I grieve from tonight was everybody thought we had a closed, you know, a closed pavilion that was. You know, and it's not, and I think, I think you guys can be part of this. That's why Iris wants to come to the committee meetings, absolutely. Absolutely no reason why not to.
Okay, well, I hope that you take into consideration what the residents are really feeling about this project.
Well, if we were, we wouldn't be stepping back from it.
I'm sorry?
If we weren't understanding and realizing it, we wouldn't be stepping back from it.
And and my other point is that I'm sure there's going to be opportunities for grants in the future. This grant has been there, there's other grants, it's always gonna be grants from, you know, these these organizations. And I know Jane, you do a great job with your grant writing and and going after these and and it's appreciated. It really has to be in step with with the.
What do you before you vouch, vouch, vouch up to before? Woody, before you vouch, vouch, vouch up to before.
Thank you, hi, uh, I have a couple of questions, um, one that, I just wanna remind, well, I think. Whoever had mentioned a date of a park in Bethel, I think they might be referring to the state park, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure, but. I just wanna point out that this is not a state park, there, there is, it not running by state, we do have to maintain it, and so that is something to consider, and. We can't really compare it to other state parks, because it's not gonna be run the same way, um. Jill had, I think, touched on partnerships, and as far as like having a kitchen situation for people to go on events, we do have that in our town at the Narraford Union. And even though some people might feel a certain way about the Wyden, we do have that available to us, we also have the entire gymnasium that can be rented out for events. Um, and as far as, um, oh, we're right here, um, we do have something existing as well, and if we do want a bigger community center, a bigger, better community center, I don't think that this is the place for it, um. I know other events have gone on in the park before for Halloween and such, um, I've seen where tents have been put up in that event. I don't see why that hasn't been working so far, because on a daily basis, I don't really, there are days I don't see anybody at the park. And I know that this could bring more people, and that's great, um, but on the daily basis, I don't see where that pavilion is gonna be filled, it's gonna be certain events, just the same way that it's been now. And do we need to have a permanent structure using all this funding? If it's not gonna be utilized at all, as much as we think it will.
Thank you. Woody.
Yes, Mr. Johnson, um, it's, you only have twenty thousand dollars, is that correct?
The grant is twenty, and it, it's a matching grant.
So you would, you have forty thousand.
Forty thousand, yes.
With the federal monies that was discussed.
So, excuse me?
With the federal money that was discussed earlier, we have, is it, what is that?
Total potential spend. What is the total we want to have, because that Taj Mahal is not forty thousand dollars, that's a hundred fifty, that, no, I'm sure. So I would think that the size would be, so what I'm getting at, sir, is I think that the size would be limited to the money you have, so in other words, you're looking at your construction costs and say, per square foot. This is the pot we have, this is actually what we can build, because. Things are so expensive. So I would think that the sizing would be correlated to the amount of money you have. Thank you very much.
We all agree that the size should be reduced.
Yeah, you were saying, you were trying to turn, earlier you were trying to determine the size by picking table, I'm saying that surely. Your money determines the size of the building.
These plans were drawn on the forty thousand dollar budget.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Pass out your hand.
Yes, guys.
Yes, you had your hand up?
Nate, no.
Okay, yes, Bernie.
You may have been.
And then, after Bernie, I got Lisa on there.
This is a grant, will include the cost of the picking tables if you're not hand on?
No, it does not. It does not include the picking tables. Uh. Lisa's on, can you unmute Lisa?
Hi, uh, to answer the comment wi- with respect to the town of Bethel Park that I was speaking about earlier, it is a completely town-maintained park by the town of Bethel. They actually run their summer camp out of that town park during the day, um, it's open from, I believe it's eight o'clock in the morning until five-thirty for campers. So that's not something that it's a state park, there's no state funding as far as I'm aware of, the, not.
What is the name of the area?
Sorry?
What's the name of the park?
It's the town of Bethel Town Park.
And where is it located?
It's in. The park has a town pool, it has a pavilion, it has a pickleball court, it has a basketball court, um, it's not nearly the size of.
It's right on Route fifty-five, we're next, next to their transfer station. Yeah, that's a nice place. You know, and the county has the fire training facility. Oh, over by the airport. Yeah, it's, if, if you're coming from Lake, Honey, I'd like it's out just past the airport. What do we?
Oh, let's research.
Up to the area, also just so you're aware, the town does employ, um, workers to clean that. The town park and to clean it up, so that's something else, but with respect to all the residents' comments that live near. The, um, flats area, I understand why you might not want increased traffic, but that is a town park. So the town board really should pay attention not just to the residents that live near the flats, but also to the residents outside of the flats. That would like to utilize the, the town park, would like to go down to the flats and enjoy it, but. As it is right now, it's not some, a facility, it's not a place where they can go and enjoy it, because there's no shade, there's no restrooms, it's just not feasible, so. The town really needs to take into consideration not just the people living in the area right there, but they also need to take, take into consideration the needs of the entire town. We have a growing population of families with small children, the town really should consider that. This would be a huge selling point for families to be into the town, right now, there's no place for children to go and play. That's, that's all that I needed to say.
Is there any further board comments?
I have a couple of comments, um, number one, it was very exciting to hear some new voices today, so. I appreciate the people, uh, who come in that don't normally speak and sharing their opinions. Um, I think one of the other takeaways for us, and certainly it's been part of our discussion, but. The prior history of the park and how some of those projects have been dealt with. Are certainly part of this situation and people's feelings about that, and I just wanted to acknowledge having heard that in people's talking points today, so. Thank you.
I think we heard both the public wants, and I hope that we can, uh, deliver something this week.
I'm still new on the recess too.
Well, sometime this week.
Um.
Friday afternoon.
Friday afternoon. I, I don't know if that's gonna be enough time for Carl. Um, we're probably gonna need at least a week or possibly two.
Well, we have to meet with him, so.
We have to meet with him, and then he's gotta draw up something that can become a bid spec. The twenty-second is two weeks.
That's a planning board meeting, uh.
Is it? We can do it before the planning board.
Okay, um, I would need to do the twenty-third. I'm not here on the twenty-third.
I don't think that's.
That's not always about you, Greg.
I know, I'm just being honest about. Whether or not I'm available.
Well, the twenty-third wouldn't be a planning board meeting.
What, what are you suggesting happens on the twenty-third?
Well, meet with Carl, see if.
On the twenty-third?
No.
Meet within this.
Twenty-third would be, we could come back to see if we've got anything that is going to. Work for the bid specs or whether. It gets totally scrapped. I mean, see, you need a board.
Let me ask you this. If we approved everything today, what the next step would be that Carl makes bid specs?
What we would approve today is. A reduction in size, um.
No, 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 I'm just asking the process right now.
If, if we, if we approved this, as it, as it was presented, if we approved this, it would go to Carl, he would give us bid specifications based on this. Then we would be setting a date in order to get those bid specifications back. Normally, that would be six to eight weeks, we would be trying to do it. At the beginning of September. And then you would be looking at a, uh, you know. A great grant, and whether you put that in your bid specs would be when your completion date would be.
So the twenty-second then seems way off, Carl, what we need to do is give Carl. Direction as to size and design.
Which the committee is supposed to meet and do.
Right, and so the committee.
We're talking about, you probably understand this, but we're talking about reacting to the committee's direction and what Carl does in the interim. So we need those two things to react to.
Ben, Greg, Jane. So just for timeline-wise, typically you want thirty days, we typically ha- have to out, to bid for a project such as this size. We're in the beginning of August right now. That normally would be awarded in the beginning of August. It needs to be done, I believe, by the beginning to middle of October, the product to be completed. We don't have a ton of time to get that bid put out and awarded and completed. Just looking at the schedule of timeline, if you will.
I think at this point, have the committee meet, talk to Carl whether or not we're gonna be able to meet the deadline, even if we knew exactly what we wanted.
And to talk to Sullivan about a potential.
Correct, yeah.
Um, okay, so the committee meets this week. And. Then Carl has to come in.
Yeah, the meeting will be based on Carl's availability, um, whether the committee want, well, the committee should be with Carl to speak with Carl.
I think so.
Um. And whether or not, you know, then that would. Need another set of plans drawn up. For the recess meeting. Which, if we recess to the twenty-third, say we even approve the plan on the twenty-third. Put the bid specs out by the thirtieth, you're gonna be October before you.
Why does it take a week to get bid specs out if he has them?
Well, he's gonna have something like this, bid specs are gonna be a little different than this.
It seems like there's some variables that are kind of beyond our control tonight, so I would say why don't we hold the twenty-third in advance of those inform, that information if that works for everybody.
Recess the meeting to the twenty-third at what, six-thirty?
I can meet anytime then.
Yeah, we can meet earlier. Yeah, we can meet earlier. Okay, five? In the morning?
Yeah. Do we wanna meet in the afternoon too?
That's fine by me, earlier the better.
Okay.
I'm liking earlier, but.
So, two, three? Yes.
She went, starting at three. Yep. There'll be after-school programming space, starting at three. So we could meet at two. Four, one.
Ten.
Oh, man, it's getting early.
I don't know.
Two o'clock.
On the twenty-third?
Yep. Yeah, there's a lot of work to do between now and then and see if it even. It's.
So we'll hold that, and if that is being done reasonably, we won't find out, right?
Yeah, and then we.
Twenty-third at two o'clock, is that, does that conflict with Crystal's program?
No, it's three.
Why don't we do it at one o'clock?
I can do one.
Can you do one, everybody?
Sure. Bruce won't be, well, my Bruce won't be.
No, he's on the summer vacation.
Yeah.
Hmm, so one o'clock.
Bruce's birthday.
Okay.
And maybe meeting. All right, well, you can.
Recession, one o'clock, August twenty-third.
There is no meeting on Wednesdays, just so you're aware, we're not using, utilizing the town hall, in fact, during the summer, we're utilizing the playground.
Thank you, Crystal.
Motion to recess.
I made a motion.
Second, I'll second. All in favor? Opposed. Tough crowd, Ben. Ken, your, your direction tonight was invaluable.